Lord, thank you for this beautiful Monday that we've been able to enjoy. I thank you for the opportunity to meet here tonight with this legislative body. Lord, thank you for the opportunity that each person here has to serve on behalf of this community and we pray that the decisions that are made and the things that we do would glorify you. It's in Jesus. Now we pray. Amen.
Everyone stand for the pledge.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Back to the court, call the roll, please.
Mr. Simpkins.
Here.
Mr. Ledger.
Here.
Mr. McElwain.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Yeah.
Ms. Spicer. Mr. Buckner. Mr. Britt.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Grove. Ms. Brown.
We do have quorums. Good to see you all here tonight. First order of business is the approval of the minutes of the June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four work session. Motion by Commissioner Petty, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next time business is committee reports. Any committees report? Thank you. Next one is appointments. Regional sided waste board. I was unable to contact the everyone that is up for appointment. I'd like to move this down to the September meeting and let's take it up then. Under new business, the first item is the county commission supplement. The general assembly in their wisdom decided that county commissioners, since they ask you to train, that they are asking now they have put in place that you can earn money for doing your training to help incentivize that. This is to be funded by the state of Tennessee. There's no cost to the to the local body. The state Tennessee will pay that. Some of you were grandfathered in on this. I know that Commissioner Dawson and Commissioner Simpkins, and I believe maybe Commissioner Buckner had been grandfathered in and Commissioner Beatty, you grandfathered him because of your previous service. Okay. So again, they did not put in here determination what they're going to pay. I'd heard, well, there it is. They did put it in here. Okay, I got a new copy. I see it is. The county may pay its courage to pay us something at six hundred dollars in addition to your regular salary. So it'll be an incentive for y'all to do your annual training. We have to, on the public chapter, we're required to do a resolution. So my ask is to send this on to the regular session for approval. But before her motion, motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. This is, most of it's online. I'm grandfathered in too, but I get mine a different way. Is all online what y'all been doing? Okay. Mine does. You can take my class. Or it is. Well, we're going to put another class together in September. You're welcome to attend. We do serve refreshments. It's always a good time. Plus you'll get your six hundred dollars after you get all your total on that. I think that'd be cheating. You've already passed the class, but I appreciate your enthusiasm. I'll get you hooked up on that. But Commissioner Dawson, we'll make sure you, we'll get you, make sure you're not on the email list. We'll get you on one so you can see what was available out there and make a look, make a few bucks on that. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number two is health department land purchase. We have had to make some different arrangements with the health department. As you know, as we talked about earlier, the state of Tennessee is putting together a project for seven and a half million dollars to build us a new health department. Our contribution was a million forty seven thousand dollars of that. They've actually, their initial thrust was only six million dollars, but they found some additional funding to get this built. Our funding has not had to go up. Our option on this was to either buy land or just give them the cash. What the best lot we found after some issues we had in industrial park is what most of you know is the Oregon insurance property at the corner of Hummingbird and Highway seventy across from the Shell station. That fits our criteria. It's three and a half acres and that's what we need. That had been in real estate for quite some time, but because some of the movements lately on that, the owner of that property has dropped the price down to where it's reasonable. He had it at nine hundred thousand. We contracted it eight hundred and fifty thousand. So if that money's budgeted, so it's not costing us any money. We'll have to turn the rest of our money over to the state to build the health department there, but they've seen and approved that site. So it's a better location than industrial park and it's not going to require much of infrastructure and land work as we were going to have to spend the money on out there. So this contract, of course, I could put a contract on something, but it's dependent upon your approval. We also have some items there due diligence about doing some environmental work and studies on before we actually close the loan. But what we're asking for tonight is just to move this on the regular session to vote on the approval of this. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. It is. It goes with the city's plan of commercials all the way down that corridor. So we've already talked to them. It's not doing anything that they don't have plans for on the city of Dixon. Mr. Petty's aware of that too. Yes, Commissioner Williams.
So this is not a budget amendment. It's in the budget?
It's in the budget.
Okay. Then did we ever, do we not watch when I have in white left?
It doesn't have any, I mean, doesn't, no, this has nothing to do with that. They're building a new building regardless. And it was Joe Biden money, but I guess this is Kamala Harris money now. You pick a name. Thought that was pretty funny. I didn't get to laugh on it. Thank you.
So do we own the health department now where it's at?
Yes.
What will happen to that building?
We have an intent to properly repurpose in that. Once we get the health department out, our financing, people that are across the street in the old maintenance building, they are at capacity now. So redoing that building for storage and to move the finance department over there would be a goal, but that we need to, that's just a thought. We have not budgeted any money or gone into any of that, but we do on that building. Hold this. I need a motion for, in a second, a motion, but thank you, Commissioner Simpkins. Thank Commissioner Ledger. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number three is body cameras and tasers for court officers. Sheriff Eads.
Just real quick. The funding for this would come out of the courthouse security money, correct, Mayor?
Yes.
So currently we don't have enough body cameras or tasers for the for our bailiffs and court's gotten quite busy. We were hoping to make this. There's some technical difficulties in the back, so we're winging it. But just to give you an idea, there's a lot of activity goes on at the court. Last year they did one thousand three hundred sixty nine transports. Warrant served five thousand. Now, not all of that was bailiffs, but there was a total of various calls at the court at the new justice center in two thousand twenty three of a hundred and seventy calls. Of course, they have daily contact with people that go in and out. Of course, there is an overview camera system, but when they're having contact, it's best to have the body camera on. Because occasionally you'll have somebody that's a first amendment auditor and this sort of thing. And in addition to that, this would, this, this would cover eleven body cameras and eleven tasers. And so we've got five that are assigned to patrol or sort of extras. So they're using them. So if something breaks and this would just put the warrants division. I've got Captain David Davis here who's responsible. This is Lieutenant Norris. He's with patrol, but he had a computer and he has a, in case y'all ask me any really detailed questions about our Exxon contract, we simply be adding the, these items, eleven tasers, eleven additional body cameras to our current contract, which has twenty eight months left on it. And so I was trying to throw all this at you. We're looking at about seventy seven thousand dollars to do all that. That covers the twenty eight months and and them upfitting and getting the equipment here. So anyway, like I said, we try to throw a little, I'm not going to read this because even though it's three pages, it still can be defied by a power. Mayor talked about that. But keep it, keep it, keep it simple, Sheriff. But that's, that's what it amounts to. And like I said, we're working on some other items with the court. We're getting a new judge here in September. So and I believe Circuit Court clerk in the past, she's going to have two trials doing this.
I've got two trials next Monday. They're going back to back. I have a trial today. If you had been around, there wasn't a parking space over there today. And I do have one of those sovereign citizens on my jury panel at this time.
Oh, fun. So anyway, we're coming to y'all to, to, where the work session, if you entertain putting this on and approving us moving forward with the purchase of these much needed pieces of critical equipment. Because in addition to the circuit court, the trials going on, you still got general sessions that's happening. And so I just feel better if all of the bailiffs had a taser instead of sporadic. And because a lot of times, you know, I wasn't here, but y'all, let me say this. Y'all collectively, all of you from the mayor, I did a really good job with the justice center. It is, will last hopefully fifty plus years or more. But it is secure, but we still have people that you, y'all kind of tour. The backside is basically a mini jail. And so, you know, those activity and contact when we have to move these things, anytime they're outside of sale, moving, there's a risk for them to buck up and have a problem. And us having access to the tasers has a less, less than lethal situation. And a lot of times if you just snap it a couple of times, that's enough to take the fight out of them. And that's why we don't have to lay our hands on them. That's why, that's what we want to do. I think they call that a dry fire. Am I right, Lieutenant?
Dry stun, yes, sir.
Dry stun. You just, you can click it. It's like the old civilian stun buildings and then a little arc. They trissey through there, get their attention. So anyway, like I said, not trying to overcomplicate it, but if you've got any detailed questions, if I can't answer, I'm going to defer to staff. A lot more technical working of what we're talking.
Sheriff Eads mentioned, or this comes out the courthouse security fund. This is not in the general fund budget, is in general fund budgets, but reserve funds. They're only to be spent on courthouse security. Any questions for Commissioner Sheriff Eads?
Does all of our deputies not already have cameras? All the road deputies. So all our road deputies have cameras and?
SROs as well.
Where's, a few SROs do not, sir.
A few, a few, but we're working for that. But we've got some flexibility, but this larger border has to be added to the overall purchase.
I just believe this day and time, all deputies need to have body cameras. You know.
Commissioner Beatty.
What's in that account?
Yes. Just to remind you of that account, we set on that account for a number of years while we were preparing to build the justice center. We got it to one point three million dollars. We used one point two million of that for all the security that we didn't have to finance that. And that led us that time around a hundred thousand dollars. We're up over four hundred thousand dollars in that fund again. And this is specifically what it's supposed to pay for, these type things.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Who was that? Who made the first motion? Thank you, Commissioner Beatty. Second, Commissioner Spicer. Any question, discussion for Sheriff Eads? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you for bringing your staff tonight.
Yeah, I got them out of the house. They're administrative. They just.
Yeah.
Item number four is Tennessee advanced communication network TACAN. As we've discussed, and y'all might remember better than me, it's probably been over a year ago. The nine one one system was looking at a different way to do business. The homeland security district we're in, all the counties were moving out to different systems, which was leaving us and some of the other counties on an island by themselves. But so we cannot expand the system we were on. And again, it gets into, I know you've got some technical folks sitting around you over there, but we were on the three and four hundred megahertz radios. There's no more channels for those. So we had to move up to eight and nine hundred megahertz. There's a thing called P twenty five and that goes to radios. You have to be P twenty five compliant. It's federal law and all this. It was kind of jarring when they first brought it to my attention a year and a half ago. They were talking about a redoing that through nine one one. It's cost up to twenty five million dollars, which jarring to say the least, when they told me at their meeting, they were saying we had a couple of years to do something about it. And I'm pointing out to him, showing up for, ask for twenty five million dollars would be like schools showing up and like, hey, we need to build a new elementary school. We got to have it next year. Well, it's just not possible. The good news is they did further study on different ways to do it, either having your own system and work different ways. The TACAN system is a system that the state highway patrol uses. They have a tower out here on forty seven is one of them. They are going to put equipment on the tower at Buckner Park and they're building a tower at the rest area. They call it the Johnny Cash rest area on Interstate forty. It's where grab, West Grab Creek Road dead ends at the rest area. After work with the sheriff's department, ambulance service, fire, EMA, and every other assorted bunch, it's gotten to the point where the TACAN system is most affordable route to go. The total budget for this to be done for all the different entities, which county, city and the smaller, city of Dixon, other smaller entities, it's around six point eight million dollars in total, is my understanding. The Dixon County's portion is two point six million dollars. We budgeted and having the budget and have for a couple of years now, a million dollars to apply to this. So our worst day is we have to come up with one point six million more dollars. The good news, but I don't bank on good news. The good news is we have a grant out there, two different grants that the city and county applied for that could reduce that amount down to two million dollars total that we had to come up with. Again, we have, like I said, we already have a million in cash that we've set aside. So, but we need to be prepared for borrowing for another one point six million dollars. The nine one one board is going to borrow the money for all the entities and then we'll pay back our proportional share over a five year period. And that's how we'll go back about funding this. And again, for you, the mid emergency services premiere, what's been going on. You're never excited about having to spend this kind of money, but compared to where we could have been, we're in a lot better shape on this. But the million dollars we have been set aside for the last two years, there's been Joe Biden money that we've had sitting there, ready to take a bite out of this. Hopefully we won't have to come up with a lot more than that. But what we're looking for, I think this has to be broken up in three items and that's where we get all legal. And I'm going to ask Mr. Reagan to help me on that.
Yeah. So you're just going to do one vote tonight to move it to the regular meeting, but at the regular meeting, it will be in three separate resolutions. The, what you're going to be approving is for the county to contract with the state to be on the state system for the use of the radios. You're going to be authorizing the mayor and, and the purchasing agent to enter into an agreement with the nine one one communications district for the purchase of these radios and find, or reimbursing over a five year period the portion that's attributable to the radios for the county. And then the third thing that you're going to be voting on is there's a requirement under the law that if the communications district, if nine one one is going to borrow money, this legislative body has to vote to authorize that or to approve that. And so there'll be a resolution related to that as well, but they're all interrelated. If you're not going to do one, you're really not doing any of them. So I think tonight you can just vote on this one item here and move it, and then it'll be three resolutions at the regular meeting.
Be glad to answer any questions. And we like, as we do with Sheriff Eads here and his staff, we have somebody can answer more technical questions, but I'd be glad to answer any questions I can or this, or this group can. Yes, Commissioner Ledger.
Our business and everything like that. How often do these change out? I mean, is it something we have to do every ten years?
I think on this system, I let Sheriff feeds, I think this is the last top system that, but again, he can, let him answer that.
No engineering degree, but to answer your question, we shouldn't have to. One of the things, the finer parts, the higher part of the weeds is the state is maintaining the big infrastructure. We'll be like users on the system.
Got you.
And so typically with the radios and stuff that we're getting, it's the technology. So you're looking a minimum of ten year life for an actual radio, but the system, the network is, is very robust. I had experience with a similar, smaller version. When I was at Bell Mead, we were on Metro's system, which is a eight hundred, nine hundred megahertz system. And so we should be good for a long period of time. And it is public safety grade equipment and a system, which means it has many redundancies built into it. And that, you know, you just need to know the channel numbers, kind of like, you know, getting direct TV with a one thousand twenty channels. You just go to the radio and change and we can talk to pretty much anybody else that's on the TACAN system. In addition, if one of my, Danny, you seen it here, he transports, sometimes we go to Memphis and transport. And, you know, if he has any trouble, he can talk to Dixon from Memphis because it, it's, it's a really robust system. I'm sorry, Mayor, let me get off. But we're excited about being able to talk because with the old system has more users came onto it. Then you get dead spots. It wasn't reliable. When I, when I was here in eighty seven, just a young pup, you knew where the dead spots were. When I came back, I was shocked to be going down Mount Lebanon stretch. Most everybody knows where Mount Lebanon stretch is. Never before did I not be able to talk there and I needed to call in. A car slid off in a ditch and I couldn't get through and that was pretty scary. But I knew early on, even back in twenty, the mayor was having discussions with nine one one board about, you know, at some point we're going to have to fix this radio system because it's dangerous to our first responders. Now, I'm not talking just about law enforcement. I'm talking about fire services and everybody else. So anyway, I think we'll be good.
Well, a good comparison again, it's like when everybody moved from analog TV and well, I had to buy our HD TVs. That's kind of where we are. Humphreys County, I could speak to them in particular. They're staying on those systems simply because they don't have, they can get by with fewer megahertz because they don't have as many radios online as we do. And it's, it goes with the population of your county. It requires that. So it's one of those, but it, it is like a generational change, but we know like any technology, something new and better will show up in fifteen or twenty years, I'm sure. Yeah.
This one would be.
Commissioner McElwain, you had next question.
Speaking of, it would be for the whole county or?
Yes. And what they did on the cost on this, they've broken it up proportionally for the number of radios purchased. Of course, Dixon County, we have the line share between ambulance, EMA and the sheriff's department, but we also cover all the volunteer fire departments and buy their radios for them. So we're a greater percentage. And again, it's probably around fifty, fifty seven percent, I think. Let's say roughly fifty five. The city of Dixon makes up the next greater portion. And then the last ten percent of the smaller cities, Wild Bluff, Van Leeuwen, Charlotte, any, any of those that may have it. But every, but the grant, if we get the grant, that's why we're not sure, but we think if it can be a two million dollar grant for all entities, it can break down our proportional share by the number of radios you have. So it will benefit Van Leeuwen and Burns and anybody else on that. But I do want to point out, one of our bigger expenses is we're having to get all the radios for volunteer fire, which we are proudly doing, but it's just, there's a cost to it. Commissioner Grove, I saw you next.
So the way I understand it, this is to pay for the radios with all of the, how much is the installation going to be, going to be to change all the radios out for all the cars, ambulances, fire trucks? I mean, that's a different cost. Have y'all said that?
It's including the cost.
That's including everything.
That's, they've done a full turnout cost on that. And one of the other deals, a grant that we already received, all of the mobiles, the ones who are actually in ambulances, they were paid for by the state of Tennessee. So that's the cost we didn't have to pick up. The portables, the ones that went handheld ones, those were not so, but we are taking advantage, but installations including all that.
Can you sell another county that?
The, they were, they were looking at that, but I saw Commissioner Dawson, I mean, because they're so dated, you know, it's going to be a small county like Humphreys that might need them, but yeah, we'll, if there's a trade in value, we're certainly going to sell them and try to recoup some of our money.
Oh, and that's pretty high.
Yeah, they don't give them away. They did show one video at one time of a police officer, I think I saw on YouTube, and he was after somebody and he was using his radio to beat somebody with them. They suggested, why don't you put that up and use that nightstick? It's a little cheaper. Not that we have to do that around here far. Sorry. That was somewhere far off from here. Any other question?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Grove. Do I have a second? Second, I'm Commissioner Britt. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. We'll continue to be glad to answer questions, but if any of y'all have a relationship with Shawna Batson at the nine one one office, that's the person that's got all the technical answers and all that. Feel free to reach out to her, but if you would like for me, I can ask her to be here in two weeks. If there's some other questions you might want to answer. I want to answer. Thank you. Next, I'm a business help center contribution. As y'all recall, we were matching the endowment for the help center. It's something y'all have already approved. The reason I'm back on this, they exceeded the hundred thousand dollars. They actually raised a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So my request tonight is, is amending that as opposed to matching a hundred thousand that we matched their hundred and fifteen thousand because it's above. that we matched their hundred and fifteen thousand because it's above, but it's, it's not a budget breaker. So that, that's my request tonight. But before commotion, motion by Commissioner Butler, second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote stating aye, opposed, thank you. Um, they're going to reopen that and start this process again. Our combination now is two hundred and thirty thousand. They're hoping, trying to get to a million dollars before they start taking your money out. So they're going to do another full press next year. So anybody you know that can help with that, they're, they're probably going to start after January. They don't want to co-mingle it with their regular money when they raise for operations. So, but I'll keep you up to date as we go forward on that. Next item of business is, is, uh, under other business, county wide speed limit. Commissioner Simpkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as we all know, over the last several months, seems like we, we're getting the abundance of requests for speed limit changes on our county roads. And we all know how they are. We've got some that's wider than others, some is narrower than others, and some of it's dirt. And we put this off on the sheriff and our highway department. And I think just from what I've seen tonight, our sheriff has plenty of things to do besides set speed limits. And it's a, it comes back to us to set the speed limits anyway. So we're the ones that will make that decision. All I want us to do tonight is have a discussion, and I know we still have some other things on the agenda, but talk with you people in your, in your districts and see how people feel, um, where they like to see the speed limits at. I know we have s- state aid roads that through roads that, that cuts through from, from ma- one major highway to another that's in a lot better shape than some of our county roads that's way down in the counties. And I'd like for our highway department to, to think about that, take those in consideration, what they could be set at. Uh, our rural roads are more winding rural roads. Uh, I think needs to be another number on those. I know where we listen to our sheriff do surveys on these roads and he comes in with all kinds of numbers, uh, but seems like he's got a kind of average on where they fall at on certain roads that he checks for us. But all I want to do is open this up for discussion tonight, uh, get your ideas of what, where you think we need to do and, uh, maybe help our sheriff out and not put so much workload on him along with the mayor.
Uh, floor is open for discussion on that. I would, uh, point out, of course, as usual, we have Jackie Hodges here. Um, before we came up to the meeting tonight, we just did a poor man's survey, holding our fingers up, counting roads in this county that should be 45 miles an hour regardless of what we do. And we came up with about 12 roads countywide. So it is almost at that point until when Commissioner Simpkins brought this up to me the other day, uh, you know, we have a county wide speed limit at 45, but that, there's only really four, 12 roads you might want to drive 40 or legally should drive 45 on. And I mean, y'all can sit here and name the Garner's Creek and New Dry Hall and Little Barnes Creek. And, you know, we can go with several of them like that, ABIF Road, uh, uh, again, there's a whole litany of them that we come up with, but, uh, uh, I think, and you know, we, we honestly, we started seeing a lot of it, more of it because the roads are getting in such good condition, it's easier to drive faster on them. And that's, as odd as that sounds, I know we've paved a lot of roads and they're in great shape. Now I think people enjoy driving a little faster, uh, on that. So, uh, I know there's something that Mr. Reagan will need to check out because I think the basic rule is, is what we've said, the, the county wide speed limit, 45 miles an hour unless otherwise posted. So if we go to like a 35, the, the law would have to be changed to that. And, uh, Mr. Hodges would need to post those 12 roads, whatever we determined that should stay at 45 miles an hour and get those signed. But when you take 12 roads and think, you know, five or six signs on a road, it's not, they're not going to be that large of an expense to do that. But, um, it's just something to think of, but y'all are out in the county, you talk to your constituents, y'all ride your roads. Uh, love to know y'all's thoughts on it, but what you think we ought to do ahead. Yes, a bunch. And it would just be the general statement that they would all speak, Dixon County speed limit's 35 miles an hour unless otherwise posted. Thirty-five.
Say, I won't go on the opposite side of this. My Tahoe, it with all safety quicks, if I'm running 35 miles an hour, it's like I'm crawling on some of these streets. I'm not, I'm not, we're not in 1981 where we got old manual brakes, no power steering. I'm not running 35 mile an hour down some of these county roads. I, I'm just, I'm putting that out and I don't believe most of y'all are either. So we can sit here and act like we're going to do safety, but my car is pretty safe at 45 miles an hour nowadays. That's just my opinion.
Commissioner Gray.
Well, you are familiar with Burns. So, yeah, uh huh. So if you go down Johnny Hall Road, you go down Saunders Mill Road, you go down, uh, what is that? Um, it branches off of Kathy Hollow, but any of those 30 miles an hour is too fast and they're not marked. So you agree that some of them.
But Commissioner, you did understand we are going to post the roads that we think to be for, need to stay at 45 and 45. And I mean, I mentioned you're talking about Buddy Road. I mentioned you like flopping down that one.
Some of the roads, but I don't know if we need to go all the way, everything's 35 miles an hour. I'm just, 35 mile an hour is pretty slow.
Commissioner Beatty, you had an opinion on that?
Well, I was going to ask after this to speak, but since we're talking about the roads, because my issue is with the roads, I'm kind of changing the subject, but we're asking Mr. Brian Reagan to maybe look at something. And I've talked to Mr. Jackie about this. As far as the roads, I've got some issues down my way with them putting the fence right on the road and you can't get down, they can't pull the ditches, they can't do anything. I would like to know what, do we have any easements? Do we have, I, I've got two places. I got one down Garrett Road, one down Timber Ridge that the, and then now there was a lady that just, I called Mr. Jackie about down Scott Hall Road that paved all the way out to the road. They can't even grade the road now. I mean, they're going to flip her, you know, to me, we should have some kind of easement. If we're talking about, we can't even work on the roads in some of these places. Oh, I mean, I would like to see, does the county roads, I argue with Jimmy Duke on this all the time. He says they don't have nothing, uh, you know, but do we have, is it center of the road? Is it 25 foot? I mean, I want some of these fences moved where they can work on the roads. You know, I got some, he can't drive 45 down on the hill, hit the fence. Uh, but you know, seriously though, they can't even work on the roads. We can't drive some equipment down there because they're so close. Do we have easements on these county roads?
Yeah. So as Mr. Hodges can tell you, we've had this discussion more times than we can count, but, um, the answer is yes and no. The, uh, there are some easements out there where property owners granted easements, uh, for roads to be, uh, widened or rebuilt and to have an area along the road for them to be maintained. If you look at our certified road list, uh, it is filled with, uh, widths of right of ways, some of which have dedicated easements that you can go to the register's office and you could look it up and find it. Others, uh, I think in the past, there may have been something that a home, a property owner may have signed off on, may or may not have been notarized. In many cases, not recorded. And it was as a part of doing a road project and there was never anything follow-up to document that. And so it really never made it into the record. And in other cases, uh, there's never been anything, but we've simply kept the right of way mode or cleared. And I think the law is that if it is an area that we've been clearing and maintaining along the side of a road, then it's an implied right of way that we have that we can maintain and keep clear. There are some roads though, where fences are, where fences do get very close to the road. If it's interfering with the, the area that we have in the past maintained in order to keep that road up, then we can address that with the property owner, but it's a mixed bag at best.
Okay. Although, speed limit question, we'll, and we'll have him take that up and report back. We have some apparently strong feelings on the speed limit, Del. And, but, uh, does anybody else have any opinions on this? Commissioner Simpkins, what would you like to?
I'd like to maybe a month. Let's, let's just consider it for about a month and put it back on the agenda. And that'll give the, uh, Jack and the sheriff can get involved too, and, and you can, and then the commission gather information in about a month from now, we'll, we'll put it back on there. And I think at that time, Jack, if you don't mind, go ahead and have the roads that you want at 45, the roads you want at 35 or whatever. And that way we can just, you know, finish it up at one vote, not for, you know, carry it on any further. And then if we agree, we agree to it, we'll pass it. We don't, we won't. So that's, it's, that's what we're here for.
That's a motion to move that on. What he said, is there a second? Commissioner Gray, thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Sure.
The condition of the roads, straightaway is a curve, whatever, is that loss was determined?
Big limit of the roof?
In my opinion, it would be.
Okay. Well, is there any way that we can straighten the road, widen the road, take it as, as an eminent domain or whatever, to get all the roads in the county at least up to par that we know how much, uh, you know, right away they are? Well, how would that to work? I mean, is that possible?
It, it is possible. The county commission does have the right of eminent domain. Uh, there's a legal cost with that. And then any property that's taken, it, it, we have to compensate the landowner for it. So, uh, again, it's, it, it will be dependent on what roads you're talking about and how much property has to be taken. So the cost is variable on there. So, uh, my, if you have something in your commission district that you have an interest in, maybe make, uh, Mr. Hodges aware of that and he can work with the county attorney and they can come up and let you know what approximately, what something like that would cost. Cause it's just, it's not a cookie cutter answer. That's going to be road dependent.
Well, down on Strang River Road, I've had the, the comment said if the roads were fixed, they had 35 mile an hour, wouldn't be too much or too slow or whatever, you know?
Right.
So I, I mean, that's just what I, I'm down there. And, uh, and then there's the store, I'm in the back there behind where Guy's man lived, going out to there. So the roads are real narrow. You got to watch, you got to stop, pull over the side of the road, get somebody by. So to me, it looked like the safety of the people and as many people lives on the roads and everything would be to widen the road and get it up to par. And you don't have to worry about too much of changing your, your feelings.
That's it. Now, if you would like to reach out to Mr. Hodges, I think I can speak for him on that. He'd be glad to have that discussion with you and come up with a plan. And that is true for any commission district. If you see something that you have in mind, uh, make suggestion, Mr. Hodges, and y'all can all bring it back to this body and we'll certainly be glad to look at it. Thank you.
And I do agree, there's places that need to be lower than other things, but I believe the sheriff would probably sit there and say 45 miles an hour is a pretty safe speed. The problem is you're going to have people running 75 mile an hour, whether you put it 25 or 35, you know, so you're still going to have that problem if we reduce it to 35. The speeders are going to speak and, and I mean, it's just my opinion. Some streets, I'm sure in front of your house needs to be 15, but.
Well, I'm sorry, Commissioner Buck.
Sheriff and I have talked about this, uh, you know, policing this, you know, he, he doesn't have the manpower, he doesn't have the equipment, you know, to, to police all these speed limits that we're, we're enforcing, that we're putting out there. So, you know, i- if they're not enforced, then they're, they're no avail. I mean, uh, we can change speed limits all day long, but if, if they don't have the manpower and, and the equipment and everything to take care of it, then, you know, we're just wasting our time theirs too. I mean, we can put up all the signs you want to, but if nobody, nobody enforces it, then it's just a sign.
Thank you. We'd have, do have a motion second, move this on to one month from today. Any other question, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote stating aye, opposed, thank you. Next time business, the 177 fund, it's the capital improvement from the school board. And we have Dr. Sutherland here to kids, get us up to date on that. Thank you.
Well, good evening. I do want to say I'm appreciative of the 45 miles an hour on Sutherland Road. And so that is the road I live on. Uh, you'll have, uh, two forms that I passed out earlier, just a reminder of the resolution and to date what we have spent. And I would like to talk about all three of those items. Um, you will see that we are going through the process of getting new baseball field lighting at Dixon County High School. It failed. Um, and we want to make sure that, um, we have safe lights for the baseball field there. And it's in conjunction with looking at the sports facility at Dixon County High School. We are painting the exterior of Dixon Middle School. And so you will see that, um, that cost there, things are not cheap. That is not painting the brick. Uh, I'm not opposed to that, but that was not in this bid. And this bid came to fruition prior to me taking this job. And so I just brought it back up to surface to move that, that process along. And then the design studies of the Dixon County High School Sports Complex, um, I have realized I'm in the wrong profession. I need to be an architect or an engineer, but those type things are very expensive. I will encourage you and invite you Thursday evening of this week. We are going to be talking a little bit more in depth about what this project looks like. So I would encourage you to attend. We start at six o'clock. You're going to notice that I have not placed the 2.5 million dollars for the highway department on Silvestre Road. When I sign that contract, that will move over to being a part of that is spent. Uh, we are all in agreeance to that, but we all know that a contract must be signed. And then we are under, um, we are in the preliminary stages of the CTE building at, um, Creekwood High School. It's going to be a beautiful facility that will range between three and four million dollars. So once you start doing all of those calculations, you will find that 15 million dollars will not go far in projects that are needed. And so much needed and, um, especially for career and tech, tech with, um, our building at Creekwood, uh, but it's going to be a beautiful building, something that, um, the Charlotte and White Bluff community can be very proud of. It's going to mimic what that school looks like. And so, uh, we're proud of that, but we're in the preliminary stages on two of the big projects. But I would encourage you to come out and be a part of the planning meetings because there you can voice, um, your thoughts and feelings on these projects. And, um, then we'll move forward every month with some type of, uh, communication on projects. I have asked Miss Starr to just put me on your agenda because these projects will continue to roll. They'll roll very quickly and I want to keep you up to date because that was what I promised. Do you have questions for me?
Did y'all get the roof fixed at Creekwood June?
The, yes, we have. And if you come to our planning sessions or, or our, uh, board meetings, you will find I give updates on all of the projects that maintenance, uh, are currently working on. But lots going on in the school district with the facilities and academically.
Any questions for Dr. Sutherland?
Senior High is work, it's a progress. Um, we are working on several of the projects there with the roof. Uh, we have to do that in stages. And prior to me getting in this job, they were working on where the. And prior to me getting in this job, they were working on where the tarp was. And so that it will be ongoing. But we have touched that, we have worked on that, and we will continue to work on that project.
Any other question, Dr. Sullivan? Dr. Sullivan, thank you for reporting on that. We appreciate you being here.
Always.
Under announcements, I noticed that a new school board member sitting back, Miss Sherri Thiel. Congratulations on your election. We look forward to working with you and your great school boards you have over there. Under announcements, any announcements? Hearing none, the next work session of meeting will be on September 3, which is a Tuesday at 7:00 PM at the Beaufort Dell Booty Reed Junior County Commission Chamber, the Dixon County Administration Building, Forecourt Square in Charlotte. Have a motion second adjourned?